Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting of May 20. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem.
True patriot love in all of us command. With flowing hearts we see the right, the true north, strong and free from far and wide. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem and to the marketing department for the images of our city. I now take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges of Beaver, Cree, Dene and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work and play on treaty territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge that these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Moving on to today's, through today's agenda, we have one proclamation. I'll take that opportunity to read this. The Community Disability Services Professional Appreciation Week, May 19th to 25th, 2025. Whereas over 15,000 people are employed in the community disability services sector in the province of Alberta, and whereas having a disability is often isolating for individuals, it is crucial that we support this sector and its employees to make sure that every Albertan is given the opportunity to live a rich, meaningful life in their community through access to services. And whereas disability service workers are valued for the positive impact their work has on the lives of people with disabilities and their families, and whereas the city of Grand Prairie recognizes the important work of the Alberta Disabilities Workers Association for its advocacy in raising awareness among Albertans of this essential workforce. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jackie Clayton of the city of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim May 19th to 25th as Community Disability Services Professional Appreciation Week in the city of Grand Prairie. So, thank you for that. We're gonna come to a presentation. I understand there's a couple representatives here from this association. So, come on up and I'll present you with this. Council, wanna jump up here? Yeah, for sure. Is that on?
Not clear. Right for a later show. Not from you?
council minutes, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the meeting of May...
Fifth.
Fifth, as presented.
So, that motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue for discussion or debate. I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councillor O'Connor, in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number six, the adoption of today's agenda, recognizing councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Give her that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. Councillor O'Connor, how do you vote?
In favor.
Councillor O'Connor votes in favor? And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number seven of today's agenda, under delegations. We had two organizing, or two groups, let us know that they are interested in being a delegation for the afternoon session. Today, we don't have an evening session, but when we do, there is an opportunity to speak to council in the evening session. If you're interested in speaking to council, we just ask that you fill out a form, let us know that what you'd like to come to speak to council about, and submit that form so that council is aware, and it's as simple as that. So first, Mr. Craig Reed, if you'd like to come up, take about five minutes to present to council, council may have questions for you. Your microphones are on, if you want to pull them a little closer to you, once you're situated, if you can just introduce yourselves and then take five minutes to address council. Council may have questions for you. Following later in the agenda, we deal with council delegation business, and you're welcome to stick around and listen to the conversation. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. There we go. Okay. Greetings, or good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members for the city of Grand Prairie. Thank you for allowing our delegation the opportunity to present today. We, as environmentally conscious, life sustainably focused and affordability minded residents of Grand Prairie, respectfully ask that you follow the leadership shown by Wheatland County and Stettler County, number six, and formally withdraw the city of Grand Prairie from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the FCM, particularly given its current structure. To quote the county of Stettler, "We believe the FCM is increasingly moved away from adequately representing the unique challenges and priorities of rural municipalities." And from Wheatland County, "Our decision stems from a growing concern about how well the FCM focuses, FCM's focus aligns with the unique needs and challenges of rural communities like ours. We believe the current structure and priorities of the FCM do not provide sufficient opportunity to represent distinct needs of rural communities." So, our concern is this. In 1990, the International Council on Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLI, was founded with the support of the United Nations to bring global sustainable development policies directly to the municipal levels. After the 1992 Earth Summit introduced Agenda 21, ICLI began working with national and local government associations, including the FCM, to advance these policies across Canada. Since the mid-1990s, the FCM has partnered with ICLI to promote international frameworks like Agenda 21 within Canadian municipalities, particularly through initiatives such as the Partners for Climate Protection. This partnership marked a shift. What was once a bottoms-up advocacy organization, giving municipalities a voice to the federal government, especially during disasters and times of unfair treatment, the FCM has transformed into a top-down deliverer of international policy mandates to the local levels. Today, in unison with the federal government's mission of Canada being a post-national state, the FCM increasingly promotes flawed net zero and climate change mandates alongside models promoting open borders, high-density living, often without full democratic consent from local communities. By offering grants that only partially cover projected costs, municipalities have sometimes been enticed into programs that carry long-term obligations and financial impacts without full provincial oversight or consultation. This creates a real risk for local autonomy and sustainable fiscal planning. So now, let's look, take a moment and look at a few important factors about climate change and net zero. Carbon dioxide, CO2, the supposed driver of climate change, makes up only about 0.04% of the Earth's atmosphere. Human activity is responsible for approximately 4% of that 0.4%. Alberta often pointed to as the Canada's highest emitter, per capita emitter, emits about 338 million metric tons of CO2 annually, when both industrial and personal emissions are combined. However, Alberta's natural environment already offsets far more CO2 than it admits, emits. Forests absorb approximately 380 million tons of CO2 each year. Wetlands absorb approximately 25.8 million tons annually. Agricultural lands absorb about 300 million tons per year. This gives Alberta a net carbon deficit of approximately 367 million tons, confirming Alberta sequesters more CO2 than it produces. This calculation does not even include the enormous carbon storage and capacity of Alberta's 5.6 million hectares of peatland. So in short, if Alberta were sealed off under a dome, plant life and therefore human life would not survive because of an insufficient amount of atmospheric CO2. As biologists will tell you, plants require at least 150 parts per million of CO2 to sustain life. So in conclusion, seeing only the likelihood of long-term tax increases, greater regulatory burdens and lasting harms to our natural environment and way of life, we respectfully ask the city of Grand Prairie to reconsider its participation in the FCM, particularly in its current framework. We further encourage the city, or councillors, to consider these questions. What tangible benefits does the city of Grand Prairie receive from the FCM's membership in its current form? What are some measurable advantages of being in the FCM for the taxpayers of Grand Prairie? What is the annual membership fee currently being paid to the FCM? And what are the total operational and compliance costs associated with fulfilling FCM program requirements? Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your presentation today. I will open it up to council for questions of the delegation, and as mentioned earlier, we deal delegation business at the end of this, towards the end of the agenda, rather. Some of these questions, I think, will probably be good questions for council to ask administration, but for now, if there's any questions, other delegation. I did have a question, actually. In regards to the, the third question, sorry, the second question, the measurable advantages of being in the FCM for the taxpayers of Grand Prairie. When we get to the opportunity to ask administration, we can talk about grants that have been received. I know in particular, there was a grant received for a significant amount of trees this year that will be planted in the city, and that grant was funneled through, from the federal government, funneled through FCM. But the measurable advantages personally that I think are, that are sometimes hard to quantify, are the conversations that we have with other mid-sized cities. The two municipalities that you reference actually aren't urban municipalities, they're not members of our Alberta urban municipalities, they are rural focused, and I would say that many of the conversations at FCM tend to be larger city focused. And at times, having attended this conference, I know that some of the conversations may not be applicable, but some of the greatest benefits that I've seen from this conference are the conversations that we have with comparable municipalities across the country. I think back in 2019, when the then-chair of Alberta Municipalities put together a group of Alberta municipalities to really promote Canada's energy, and the initiative of that was to municipality, municipal politicians, I think councillor Bressi donated some time to be in that booth, and that booth there was there to educate Ontario and Quebec in particular about the importance of Canada's energy being shared coast to coast. They, people had similar t-shirts on, so people that weren't familiar that you were from Alberta and how important the energy sector was to our province, learnt a lot about what was going on in not only our province, but how Canada could be a stronger country by sharing its resources coast to coast. And that isn't something that you would see as part of the regular curriculum or the agenda of an FCM conference. Those are the things that happen in between the conferences because we are having conversations with other municipalities from across the country. So for personally, for me, I would agree with some of the comments in your, in the earlier part of your statement of how the organization has seemed to pivot away from an advocacy group that supported municipalities and more to be a service that works to distribute grants on behalf of the federal government. They have grown in size by staff over the years, they've never really, to my knowledge, served our municipality in a way of advocating any of our federal priorities, but there have been many other benefits, such as the grants that we've received most recently. And I think that FCM, you're right, does align with some initiatives that may not be in our best interests, in particular in our region, but I think that some of my colleagues may have some other comments in regards to what they see of the value of FCM. And then the questions about the cost and what specifically we've got back from this program, I think we'll leave to when we have opportunity to ask administration. But for now, I'll recognize councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks for coming in, I really do appreciate when people are coming in and respectfully sharing their concerns and thoughts, and always appreciate when residents do that. So, thank you for, for being here. I am curious to talk about, in terms of the new framework for FCM, and you talk about changes that's made, what's your understanding of recent changes that have been made at FCM? Like, what are you saying when you say the new framework there?
Well, because it was originally created back in the, like, the 19, early 1900s, and then since 1992, it's slowly been progressed to a more of a top-down organization rather than a bottoms-up organization.
What do you mean by top-down? How do you see it as a top-down organization?
Well, because they, like I said here, they entice municipalities and cities and stuff to follow the UN agenda, the Agenda 21.
The federal grants there, that you guys receive from, from, from the federal government is pushing driving forces for this UN agenda.
Right. So, when we get a grant for planting trees, do you see that as something, we shouldn't plant those trees, or?
No, I mean, you should be planting trees anyways. Yeah, nobody's disagreeing with that, it's just the other stuff, right? Like, how much does this cost the city taxpayer? You know? When I voted, when I bought a house, I didn't, I didn't sign up to solve the world's UN problems, right?
Right. Yeah, and I guess I just don't really see that when I talk to FCM, although I do definitely see that there's been a, I don't think the West has always been heard by FCM the way it should be, and I definitely do hear from some of my rural colleagues about the concerns about rural representation there, and I, I know for, for me, it is still a, it's still an elected organization where you have a board that's elected by councillors, they're not appointed by the federal government, they're not appointed by anybody else, and for me, I think what the value is, is getting to advocate for the Alberta, for Alberta needs. They, there is, FCM does have ears in Ottawa, and they do have, they do do advocacy, and they do get, they, they do talk to the federal government, and when they do, I want Alberta's voice to be at that table. So, Mayor Clayton shared a great example of, a few years ago, when pipeline, the last time we had a big pipeline debate in this country. It's, personally, I think municipalities should stay out of that debate because it's not really our jurisdiction. Unfortunately, we did see a lot of municipalities, especially west of us, taking a very strong stance and being effective in their opposition to those pipelines, and I think when I saw those other municipal leaders taking a stand and being effective in shutting down pipelines, I thought it was a responsibility of Alberta municipal leaders to stand up and tell Alberta's story about how we do have sustainably, responsibly produced energy that this province relies on, not just to eat at its home, but also drive its economy. And for me, I think if we was dropped, I think there's some fair conversations to be had about cost for, cost, cost benefit, but for me, when there's this large, there's this large table going on across the country, I think it would be a real shame for Alberta not to be there telling its story and being there pushing back when untruths about our industry and untruths about our communities are being told. And I think for me, that's the biggest benefit of participation, is getting to push back on the narratives when they need to get pushed back on.
Are there any, if you were to leave the FCM, is there any avenues where you would, like, is that avenue gone then?
Well, and if we left FCM, one of the most direct ways is, FCM is member controlled, so it's run by a board of directors that are all municipal councillors that are elected by municipal councillors from across the country, and that board of directors, they take their direction through a resolution process. So what it is, is when municipalities across the country want to advocate for somebody, they bring to, they bring to a convention a resolution forward saying, for all these reasons, we want you to advocate for this action, and then members get to vote on whether or not they're gonna advocate on, on that topic or not. And if you're not a member, then you don't get a vote, so you get no say in who's on the board of directors, and you get no say in what advocacy positions the organization takes. So that's the biggest thing you lose, if your municipality says, we're not gonna be a membership, then it is a democratic organization, and you only get to vote if you show up to vote.
Okay. Well, yeah, it sounds like a federal, federal government issue, right? Like, so, you know, you bring that to the city and you get a voice, but, you know, does the citizens of Grand Prairie get a voice?
Yeah.
Do we get to come talk to you and tell you we don't want to be a part of this?
Yeah. Absolutely. I mean, I think that that's our role, is to listen to you, not just here at these meetings, but also, I think all of us are probably happy to get a coffee with residents too, and have those conversations here, what are your priorities? And of course, there's 75,000 of you that we need to balance and hear from all 75,000 of you and figure out how do we get the best, the best thread that serves the most people possible, just like they have to do when they hear from their thousands of, thousands of members, but, but absolutely, I think it's supportive of us to have these conversations with folks.
Do you, do you have a number on how much this costs the city every year?
Yeah.
So, when, well, off the top of my head, it's $16,000, but when we have an opportunity to ask administration, we'll get some more information for some of your questions, specific details. I just wanted to, before I go to councillor Thiessen, who's next in the queue, another, following up on some councillor Bressi's comments, another initiative that is quite valuable at FCM is when we have an opportunity to bring forward resolutions. It was probably about four years ago now, when we were seeing a real disparity... following up on some councillor Bressi's comments, another initiative that is quite valuable at FCM is when we have an opportunity to bring forward resolutions. It was probably about four years ago now when we were seeing a real disparity in rail service. And so, especially in Northern Alberta, we were hearing from industry that rail was really being not poorly, not well-executed in Northern Alberta. We were speaking to organizations such as International Paper and forestry partners from across Northern Alberta who were facing challenges such as the auctioning of rail cars, who were facing the piece where they would order 100 rail cars and get 80 rail cars, and they weren't getting fully serviced. And with that, some of their inventory was being spoiled. So through conversations of other municipalities in Alberta, we put forward a resolution, and we actually put it as an emergent resolution to, for C, for the federal, for FCM, for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, to advocate to the federal government that CN, get rid of these rail disparities, get rid of rail auctioning, have better communication in their winter services, share better data. So that resolution process is something that we have an opportunity, as councillor Bressi mentioned, to share Alberta's stories, that if we weren't a member, we wouldn't have that opportunity to share those issues. Councillor Teason.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in and taking the time, gentlemen, today to speak to this issue. I know sometimes clarity comes a long way. My question for you is in regards to the programs that FCM authors. So in your speech and in your letter here, you talked about the Partners for Climate Protection Program. Are there any other programs that you see as maybe the city might be, might be entering into that you're aware of, or are you asking us today to detail all the FCM programs?
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so I'll just ask this then. In the last year or so, you hear a fair push towards high-density housing and stuff like that. And I know this city council here has been grasping, grasping with rezoning things and stuff like that. So is that a directive from the FCM? Is that, is that part of the, part of the Partners in Climate Protection Program and stuff?
Well, I think they definitely put out programs to help diffuse a bit of the urban sprawl that we saw through the 80s and 90s, especially with population increases through immigration and in-migration, midsize cities and larger urban areas, especially midsize cities, because we're not used to seeing the big, high-density buildings. We're feeling a bit more pressure to densify. And with that in mind, with the immigration, and immigration doesn't actually come from, from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Really, it's, as Mayor Clayton and councillor Bressi said, it's really a conversation that we have between other elected officials at FCM. We get ideas from them, we share ideas with them. I remember being a new councillor in 2014 and being all excited about our edible landscaping policy that I got over the finish line and talking in our little Alberta huddles that we, we get. You notice you've got the City of Edmonton councillors there, Calgary, you start sharing your ideas. And I've seen edible landscaping concepts go across the province of Alberta from those conversations, as well as into the province of Manitoba and even as far as Halifax, Nova Scotia. So it's not just an opportunity for us councillors to get ideas and new ways to do stuff or to obtain grants to grow our city responsibly, but it's also an opportunity for us to share our ideas and to take that local, homegrown idea and put it out into the world, into the larger, vast swath of elected officials across the country. And maybe they can pick that ball up and run with it there in their community, too. So I understand, I guess, some of the concerns here. And I think your questions are really, really great at the end. And I think councillor would be remiss to not ask these questions of our administration because we should have a full handle and understanding of what partnerships are in. But for me, I don't see FCM as a top-down directing municipalities to do stuff. I've read some of the ICLI material, and I also met with Ms. Braun when she was here in Grand Prairie on tour, and I saw you gentlemen there, too. And my question to her was, okay, well, besides getting out of FCM completely, is there a way you can get inside FCM and change it from the inside out so that it works for everybody, maybe not for the international people that are influencing their way across the ocean into our country, into our communities? So I understand your concern completely, but I also see many benefits to being part of the FCM membership as well.
Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So as my fellow councillors will tell you, I'm not a big supporter of FCM. I never, I agree with you. I've seen many changes since 2001, when I was first on council, over the years of how FCM has changed its focus to focus more on what the federal government wants us to do rather than on what they would like the federal government to do. I have seen that switch, and I agree. However, one of the problems in Canada is we have a very large population that lives mostly in the east. And in Alberta, our population is only about 11 or so percent of the entire population of Canada. And so it's very hard to have a voice when you're the small person in the room or when you're the limited population in the room. And so my question is, do you not see value in having any kind of voice at the table? Do you not see value in being at the table and having a voice rather than not being at the table? Because if we're not at the table, do we really have a voice? And that's something I've struggled with for a number of years. But in the end, my conclusion is, if we're not at the table, we don't have a voice. And I just, how do you feel about that?
So then, how do you force change? How do you force change in the FCM?
Well, by attending and voting on resolutions, by electing the board members, by being participating. If we're not a member, we don't have any say on the resolutions that the board continues to carry forward when they advocate to the federal government. If we're not a member, we don't get to vote for the members that represent Alberta. In particular, Edmonton and Calgary each have a member as the largest municipalities. But then we elect an urban and a rural position on that board. If we're not there, if we're not a member, we don't get to elect those people. If we're not there, we don't get a voice in those conversations, to councillor Blackmore's point.
Is it possible to maybe have a survey for the city and ask the residents if they'd like to be a member of this FCM?
To have a referendum on a $16,000 membership, I don't think would be a good use of councils and the city's money. Referendums are significantly expensive.
Okay. Well, just like an online survey, or, you know, email, or just even Facebook. You guys have a good social media on Facebook, so, you know, it doesn't have to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to a vote. Some of the, some of the examples of why you guys are in the FCM, like, it sounds like there needs to be an organization where, yeah, like, it's great to have a voice at the federal level, but, you know, as a citizen, I voted in for you guys so that you can look after Grand Prairie, you know? And it's great to have a voice, but at the same time, you know, is it, is it, are you looking after our interests or are you looking after the federal government's interests?
Well, the interests that we're looking after are representing our, our issues at a federal table. There are significant numbers of dollars that become available to municipalities through grants. And every single day, our organization puts together applications to get a piece of that, that funding. And so on a regular basis, we aren't successful in applying for grants. So when we are, in particular, grants that are funneled through FCM, we see that as a win. And so I'll go to councillor Bressi, and then maybe, I know a bulk of the conversation will be with administration in regards to, you know, the time and the money that's received and specifically what the grants are. But I'll go to councillor Bressi.
Yeah. I, I think that part, part of the conversation is there is two really distinct parts of FCM. There is an advocacy side of FCM, and then there's a grant program side of, side of FCM. And I, and the advocacy side of FCM is truly a bottom-up thing, where I explained how it's with resolutions, it's members going to the federal government and saying, these are the changes we want you to make. These are, and lately, what their, what, what the big argument push there has really been about in terms of advocacy has largely been just for municipal funding, where we know that municipalities collect about 8% of tax revenues in Canada, and yet they deliver about 60% of public infrastructure and the majority of public programs that people touch. And so a lot of the advocacy has been saying, hey, we need, there needs to be an understanding of how municipalities, with 7% of the taxes, are doing most of the public services. And federal government, you need to, if there are things you want to see happen in this country, then you need to fund it, has been a big part of what's going on, saying, hey, don't make, don't make us do things. And, hey, federal government, give us more rights, as more abilities, communities decide what we're going to do and how we're going to go forward. And a lot of that advocacy of saying, hey, this is what we want, is a bottom-up, it's a democratic, it's a member saying, this is what we want from, we want from you. And then there is the top-down thing, which is federal government giving grants, and if you apply for a grant, you say, hey, here are the requirements that I'm going to meet for these grants. And there's some grants that I think are great. For example, when we get money to plant trees with no strings attached, other than we have to plant those trees, I think that's very awesome. When there's federal grants that say, hey, you're going to get this money, but you have to do XYZ in your recreation facilities, and you have to do XYZ with your zoning bylaws, I don't think those grants, those grants are great. And, but I think what's important to understand is for those grant programs, it's, you don't have to say, hey, we're going to follow everything that the federal government wants or that FCM wants to get any grants. You look at it program by program. And I think it is important, when we're looking at these grants, to say, hey, is this a grant that we actually want? Is this a grant that has no strings attached, like just plant trees? Or is this a grant that has a lot of strings attached, like do XYZ with your transit? And for me personally, I think it's really important that we're saying yes to those grants that have no strings attached or that work for our community, because those are federal tax dollars that our residents are paying for anyways. And I want them to get their fair share of that money back to our community. I don't want that, those no strings attached grants to go to other communities. But I think you're absolutely right, when there's grants that ask too much or are sticking federal noses into local business where those federal noses don't belong, then I don't think we should be participating in those. And so I really do think that this is something where there's programs they don't support, which is very different than saying, hey, the whole organization, I think we should walk away from.
So where is the, where is the city in, at what stage is the city of Grand Prairie in, in the Partners for Climate Protection then? Like, there's, there's different levels to the, to the whole program, and it ultimately ends up to where you section off sections of the city and you call it, and you've probably heard of the term 15-minute cities kind of thing. So where's Grand Prairie in that?
The city of Grand Prairie has no 15-minute city initiatives.
No, I know. But that's the, that's the, that's the end game. So we've, we've-
For who, sorry?
Well, like Edmonton just did that, announced that they're, they're doing that. So, but first of all, they started, you know, at the, at the level where they're collecting all the data, how much, how much CO2 is being produced in the city and stuff like that. They collect all the data and stuff, and then they analyze it, and then they, they eventually move on to where they, where they do the 15-minute cities. And I know that the city of Edmonton, it was denied for, for quite a few years. Now, in the last, what is it, six months or so, they've, they've come out and said, yeah, well, that's what we're doing.
I think that's a fair question for the city of Edmonton and their plans in regards to a 15-minute city. I don't see how that's relevant to the city of Grand Prairie, 70,000 people who has no initiatives currently on the docket for a 15-minute city.
Okay. Because I think there's like a four-stage process that the FCM-
It's not anything my council has explored, or the city of Grand Prairie has explored.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Councillor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. That's also something I've, I've never personally heard FCM or anybody associated with FCM say, hey, we should force people to, to stay close to their home, or we should force people to stay in these districts. I've heard a lot of conversation about, hey, we should give people options to stay close to the home if they want. So it's good to have, it's good to have things like parks close to people's homes so they don't have to drive across town to, to get to it. But I've also think everybody thinks you should also have the right to drive to that park across town if you, if you want to. And so I've, I definitely have heard conversations about, how do we give people more options for things close to their home? But I've never once heard anybody associated with FCM say, hey, we should force people to only use the park close to their home, or we should force people to do anything.
So the backyard suites and the garage suites there, that was recently passed here, I think in November. So one of the things that really bothered me about that is, you know, you look at Grand Prairie. Grand Prairie gets its name from Big Prairie, right? We have lots of land here. We don't need garage suites, we don't need backyard suites, we're not Kelowna, we're not Vancouver Island, we have lots of land. Everybody's dream in Grand Prairie is to have a house with a garage, right? We shouldn't be cramming people into garages and backyard suites. So that is part of that UN initiative that's being pushed by this FCM.
Go ahead, councillor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. I think if you disagree with that, fair enough. If you don't like the change we made to the land use bylaws, allow those, fair enough. I, I never once have had somebody outside our community saying, hey, Grand Prairie should do that. Where that was driven from was we had local industry and local people who are investing in our community say, hey, we think that you should make these changes because right now, we're not seeing homes get built in Grand Prairie, and we know that we've got low vacancy rate, and, and we think you should make those choices. But I only ever heard local people telling me what they thought Grand Prairie should be. I've never once had somebody from outside the community tell me we should-
I think the vacancy rates-
Residents were coming to us, saying that they had affordability issues, and we're looking for ways to make owning a house more affordable. So adding a secondary suite is a way for, to have another revenue stream for a homeowner. Adding a carriage suite provides an opportunity maybe for your in-laws or somebody to live in close proximity to you and make it more affordable. The initiatives on that were strictly brought forward, as councillor Bressi mentioned, by residents looking to find affordability, looking for ways to own homes, as you mentioned, not to, in any other agenda for density. However, as mentioned, urban sprawl is something that is, is a concern for municipalities. We don't want to be spread across the entire footprint of the city. Municipalities like to be walking distance to schools, they like to be walking distance to, to retail and recreation and, and driving distance and bus distance to, to capture amenities. So density is something that is an efficiency. It also creates, it helps solve some affordability issues.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Grand Prairie is that big that we, like, I've never heard anybody say they want to, want to walk to downtown and, and go shopping. That just doesn't happen as much, so I disagree.
Actually, sir, you're not really part of the delegation, but sure.
Well, I live in a rural area, it's late, there's driveways, there's a drive, parking again, yeah. Parking across the street. Yeah, and I hear, I hear it all the time, people struggle with parking in the high-density neighborhoods where, you know, there's an up-down suite and then a backyard suite. And, yeah, the rich people that own the rental properties don't care, but the people that actually live in those neighborhoods, we care. We want, we don't want to see Grand Prairie turn into a rental, rental haven, so. And, yeah. And one of the affordability issues, how to make Grand Prairie more affordable for renters, is lower taxes.
Councillor Plot.
Sir, Mayor Clayton, I just, I thought we were here to discuss FCM, and so I feel like we're getting way off topic on FCM. I appreciate people coming in, but I just feel like we're getting kind of sidebarred into some other stuff here, is all.
Yeah. So thank you for coming today. As I mentioned, council will have an opportunity to ask administration some questions based on the questions that you presented with us. You're welcome to stick around, and that will be shortly on in the agenda.
All right. Thank you for- Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 7.2, the Property Management Group. When you get a moment, please come forward, introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clayton. Council. There we go. Is that better?
Yep.
Thanks for taking the time to speak with us today. When I say us, I mean those of us who aren't in the room, who are right behind me. I'm Rhonda Side, and today, I'm in front of you as a longtime property owner and, and developer. Specifically, I want to discuss your large multifamily development incentives. As many of you know, Side Group partnered with Kesa Management, and, and we picked up a number of sort of distressed properties in the downtown, something like 200,000 feet of office. Now, certainly in the last five or six years, we've seen what happens to, what's happened in the, in the use of, of office space. It's changed quite dramatically, the need for, it's changed quite dramatically. So we've got this 200,000 feet, we've got acres of parking. We're about 40% vacant. Now, if I, these buildings were also suffering pretty, pretty seriously from deferred capital investment. Now, when you just put those two things together, the vacancy and the deferred capital investment, what we see, what we saw was an opportunity here to re-envision these spaces, to re-envision the use of the properties. the use of the properties. And some of these spaces, and then today I mean specifically O'Brien Place. It's a small office building. It's not huge, but it's been chronically underutilized. It's a beautiful 1970s building, you know, typical of the time. It deserves another life. So our plan is, is to, to take it on and, and give it a new life. I want to acknowledge a couple of the programs that you have, this council has put in place to encourage this redevelopment and revitalization of, of the city, particularly in the residential development. The municipal fee rebate program, it's, it's meaningful, as is the large multifamily tax abatement program. Those are super meaningful things to the people who have to dig in their pockets and come up with money to do something. We have a thousand places where we might like to spend money, but if you help us along the way, we can put it into places that make some real difference in our communities. These large, out of the park sort of projects really do need to happen. And this is a really admirable way to manage it from the city's perspective. You don't have to give people cash to come in and help us with housing. There are other ways to do it and you found the way. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. It's, it really has made a big difference in, in the viability of projects. Unfortunately, in, in our case, it leaves behind these smaller incremental developments, the infill projects like ours. Our project will take this aging property that's in desperate need of some attention and some dough in the downtown and it'll help us give it a second life. You know, we can create 15 new residential units. This is below your 30 threshold, but it's a viable, it's viable in its own right. It's valuable in its own right, these 15 new units. For context, let me, let me, let me set a stage on these big out of the park projects. They happen and people with vision bring them forward and they, and they make them happen. And I think it's fantastic, but sometimes they, they crumble under their own weight. 214 Place, for example, was constructed through 1979, 1978, 1979. And it was an out of the park project at the time. But I want you to know it failed. It had to be, it had to go back to market. People had to come together, local people came together to support the original developers to make sure it didn't foreclose, that the building did get completed. They found they were over their head. Big projects end up like that. But let's fast forward 35 or 40 years and big thinkers, big developers with, with big plans sometimes get themselves in over their heads. And we found the same building in a similar position. It needed, it needed to be saved from going into foreclosure. So strangely, the next generation of the same people who came together in 79 came back and said, no, no, this is, this is, this is a big deal. We should, we should do something about it. So we are locals. We're going to keep these properties out of foreclosure. Sometimes the things we do need to be incremental, bite sized pieces. In our house, growing up, it was, you don't live beyond your means. So don't blow your brains out on something. This is something that's manageable. Let's do it in manageable, bite sized pieces. Large change is affected by small actions. So these 15 units we would like to do, that we would like to have you include in the large residential development program. You know, we just don't fit inside your criteria, but what we're asking you to do is to consider these small projects led generally by locals. We want to have a place in the program. I can't speak to, say, Hillside or Avondale infill or redevelopment, but I can speak to the downtown. And here, this is a great opportunity to make walkable housing, walkable lifestyles for people, seniors who are downsizing and need someplace to go, maybe can't drive the car anymore, don't have a car. They need to be able to get to the restaurants, to the library, to the art gallery, to all these fabulous things that have been put in place by the city. All this, all the groundwork you've done. Everything is in place to make this downtown core, you know, give it a second life in a new vision, a new vision of a downtown, the new vision that's happening all over for downtowns because the, the office is gone. It's walkable. You increase the density. You can take derelict properties and revitalize them and give them that second life. Take vacant, underutilized properties. It changes the texture of a neighborhood, the character of a neighborhood. We might be able to do something about the homeless population in the downtown core and the mischief they make. The more people who are living down there, the less inviting it is for, for folks who have a little bit of time on their hands and some mischief in their hearts. So today, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking you to take this fabulous program you've put into place and consider how these smaller developments might fit.
Questions? All right. Thanks for your presentation, recognizing my colleagues that might jump in the queue. First, Councilor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Appreciate coming in. I'm just curious on your project, can I just get a little bit more specific? So you said 15 units. Is it kind of a combination of two bedroom, one bedroom bachelor's, is it?
No bachelors in it, but one bedroom, one bedroom and den.
Okay. And for as far as parking stalls, so you're converting the whole building over to residential from commercial?
Yep.
Or office? And so parking stalls, no issues with that?
No, we've got 20 stalls.
Okay.
Currently, right next to the building.
Okay, well, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Council Blackmore.
Thank you for coming in today. It's always good to have a chat. I'm wondering, the current program that's in place for a large development that, while it's not in place yet, it may be in place later today, is a 10 year program. Would it be effective for you to say a five year program?
I think Ms. Side was addressing the 30 unit program that we approved already, the one that, but.
Okay. The 30 unit, yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to see some room for a lower threshold.
Or retrofits.
Or retrofits for infills for.
Okay. Good to clarify.
I could live with five years too.
Any other questions from council for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you for being here. As mentioned, there may be questions for administration when we get to that portion of our agenda. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda number nine, under committee business, the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting, which was held May 13th, recognizing for introduction, Council Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I admire that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee held Tuesday, May 15th as presented.
Thanks for that, Council Thiessen. That motion, motion is in order. I will call the question. Please vote.
Councilor O'Connor in favor.
Pressy in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Council Thiessen?
Yeah, there's a few highlights from, from the meeting there. We had a public delegation from Mr. Kenneth Wilther, who came in to speak in regards to the conditions that he felt were, were not suitable for living at the Wapiti House or for interim stay and asked council to address those or to work with the Wapiti House to address those. In our service area report, officers, our enforcement services officers took part in additional training to address the excessive noise levels of vehicles going by. This was done in response to numerous complaints over the past, I'd say, years, almost a decade of noisy vehicle violations. And this is just our hope of maybe finding ways to catch the people who maybe have modified exhaust systems and other stuff and just give them a warning and move on from there. Our second annual youth career discovery festival was held, or expo was held last week, and I think we had approximately 2,000 kids. I think most of us were there. I know I was there. I jumped over from McCappy Days to be there. So a big thank you goes out to our sponsors and the many volunteers who made this event possible and the opportunities for youth to find employment in the city of Grand Prairie and throughout the region. Finally, on May 6th, the city launched a free fire smart home assessment program funded by the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta to evaluate 200 homes between May and October of this year. So if you haven't signed up for the program and you want us to fire smart your house up, it's free and you can obtain that just by contacting the city of Grand Prairie. And if we have room in the 200, we'll get your home fire smarted for you. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Thiessen. Moving on to item 9.2, the Investment and Strategy Committee meeting held May 13th. And I will look to Council Pressy for introduction.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the May 13th Investment and Strategy Committee as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Councilor O'Connor in favor.
Pressy in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Council Pressy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. It was my privilege to get to start the meeting by reading a proclamation to recognize the fine work of economic development folks who help attract and expand and retain business in the community. So thank you again to that team. We had a presentation from the Youth Emergencies Shelter, Sunrise House, just updating us on how their new building's going and how their programs are doing. And distressing statistic we got from them is that their youth accessing their shelter is up by 150%, which probably some of that probably has to do with them just being in a more visible location, a better location, so they're more welcoming to youth who need them. But also I think part of that is just more youth in the community needs service. They specifically cited that there's families that are having to access shelter for economic reasons and so the youth end up, end up there. So that was very sad to, sad to hear and I think something the community should be aware of, though we've got more kids in need. But the good stat they shared was that kids are spending less time in their shelter and partly because of the new space they've got, partly because of some successful programs. They're doing a quicker job of getting kids stabilized and back, back home, if that's the appropriate place, or back somewhere, somewhere safe. So I again appreciate that organization all they do. We got an update on the Regional Recreation Committee, which was a committee of regional municipalities that was formed just to better coordinate our recreation efforts. And just an update that it's felt that the political side of that committee has kind of run its course. It's done some really good work, but that work's done. So the political side of it's going to wind up, but we're going to continue having our administrative staff in the region working together to make sure we're coordinating regional efforts. And then the last thing I want to highlight from the Director's Service Area Update is we got an update on all the communication efforts happening right now, but one I want to draw the public's attention to is budget engagement. Right now at engage.cdfgp.com, there's advertisement of some open houses with various departments that are being organized, as well as online opportunities for people to learn about the city budget and more importantly, share their thoughts on the city budget to inform budget deliberations next fall.
Thanks for that, Council Thiessen, or rather, Council Pressy. Moving on to item 9.3, the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held May 13th. And I will look to Councilor Thiessen for introduction.
Yeah, you're in the future there for a second, but we brought you back to earth, Miss Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial Administrative Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, May 15th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Pressy in favor.
Council O'Connor.
Councilor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Council Thiessen, a couple items of business today.
Yeah, you bet. The first item of business is the 2025 Policing Services Additional Capital Funds Request. And I would move that council amend the 2025 capital budget by $1.37 million as follows. $925,000 to records management system, $45,000 to tactical equipment, $400,000 to network infrastructure, and all funded via the future expenditures reserves from the 2024 year in surplus. Just speaking to this and the report that was given to us by Chief Lacusta and the Chair of our Police Commission, Dan Wong, these are, these are necessary, much needed funding that go forward into our police service system to ensure that we have the appropriate records management system, tactical equipment when we need it, as well as the network infrastructure to have a secure IT network. These are things that were intimated in the MNP report that council received during our transition talks from the RCMP to the GPPS that weren't, didn't quite hit the mark. So these are a bit extra, but are being used from the savings that we had in our first three years of our police service. So no big tax hits, just coming out of our reserves and from the savings that are there to ensure that our police service is properly equipped and the management and records keeping is properly secured. That's all.
All right. Thanks for that, Council Thiessen. Seeing no one in the queue with questions or discussion or debate, call the question.
Council Connor in favor.
Pressy in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Council Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. For my second order of business, I will move the Q1 2025 financial report. And I would move that council receive the unaudited financial statements and supporting information for the period ending March 31st, 2025 for information. This is part of our regular budget cycles. A good check in for council and the community to look into where the budget's tracking at. Currently, we're tracking at over $800,000 surplus. Could change to the positive or negative by the end of it, but it's a good start for our first quarter, still three quarters to go. And I hope council approve this.
Thanks for that, Council Thiessen. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councilor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously.
If I, Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, Council Pressy.
Yeah, thank you. It wasn't relevant to the motion, so that's why I didn't bring this up before. But some business horizon I'd love to do on this is usually we ask this question at the property tax bylaw time and didn't do it then, but I think it's appropriate here. And when we're evaluating our finances, for me, I really take benchmarking of how are other cities doing really seriously. It's hard to, it's hard to tell, are we effectively spending taxpayer dollars or not sometimes? But the best way to compare it is to look at what other communities are doing. And so I'm hoping to make a motion for it. I'd like to move that council direct administration to bring to the appropriate standing committee comparative financial information of Grand Prairie and other Alberta cities. And just speak to this, this is work that I know administration does internally anyways. They even circulated some at budget. I'm not asking administration to do new work, but bring forward whatever work they already have, looking at, I know they've got some information about how do our taxes compare to other cities in Alberta? How does our cost per capita compare to other cities? And we usually get that in the spring of every year. We just neglect it to ask for it this year. So I think we should ask for that so that we've got it for our residents and ourselves to compare.
All right. So that motion is in order. Just check the escribe and make sure that it covers what you were hoping, Council Pressy.
Yeah, me too.
Council Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Appreciate the motion, Council Pressy, and definitely think benchmarking is a good idea. I'm just, I'm curious about how big of a goose chase this gives administration when it just says other Alberta cities. Do we want to, I'm just wondering if you want a neuroscope or certain size of municipality or something, just to give it irrelevance, I guess.
Council Pressy?
Yeah, and the reason I'm being appropriately not, not prescriptive there is because I don't want to send administration doing a whole bunch, bunch of work. I know that they do do this for bench, for other cities that are comparable to us. And every time administration's ever provided a list of cities to benchmark you with, it's always been reasonable, so I'm sure it will be reasonable. But I don't want to send them on a, on an egg hunt doing a bunch of cities that they maybe haven't done yet. That being said, if it comes to us and we go, oh, those aren't the cities we'd want to see, then we could maybe ask for more work at that time.
Council O'Connor.
Yes, that was the essence of my question. I wanted to appreciate that clarification, Council Plott. Thank you.
Council Thiessen.
Yeah, that was actually the essence of my question too, when I got in and out of the queue. But Council Pressy, just a point of clarity, I think sometimes when we compare, I like to compare the apples with the apples rather than the rest of the fruit basket. City of Edmonton and Calgary are different beasts altogether. They have their, they have their different agreements with the province. They have a larger tax base. And then when we start looking at the rural municipalities too, they also have that, that linear assessment. I'm all for the motion, but for the sake of the work saved for, for staff, would it be possible to limit the scope to midsize cities or cities comparable in size to Grand Prairie?
Go ahead. And then I know Ms. White Way has a comment, so.
Yeah, and as I said, I, the reason I'm not being prescriptive here is so that administration can give us cities that they've already been benchmarking. If they've done the big cities, awesome, you're right. I don't think they're, I don't personally think they're the most relevant to what we're doing because there's very different fiscal arrangements there. But I routinely hear our residents saying, well, here's what I pay in Calgary, here's what I pay in Edmonton. So they are relevant in that way. But again, for me, it really is a, hey, administration, show us the work you've already done. And then we can evaluate that and say, hey, do we need more work beyond that once we[1796.42] And then we can evaluate that and say, hey, do we need more work beyond that once we see that? But not asking them to initially do a bunch more, a bunch of work they haven't already done.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Ms. White Way, did you have something to add for some context for council to sort of, give us a sort of a calls notes of where you typically would do those, the benchmarking comparables?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We routinely look at the mid-sized cities throughout the province. We do look at local rural as well as the big cities. Any information that we do bring back in this report, any of the differences, whatever makes it not apples to apples, administration will certainly highlight for council and the public's information.
As always, yeah, thank you.
All right. So, I'll call the question on that motion.
In favor? O'Connor in favor?
Bressi in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Councilor Teason, Councilor Teason, is this your agenda? Any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, I had a whole crowd here. Now, they're, they're gone. I wanted to inform them that their tax bills were mailed out last week and in lieu of the postal strike, which may or may not happen, that sounds like it is going to happen this Friday. I would urge caution to anybody watching online to not mail in your property tax notice assessments through the postal service since we don't know where they're, they're going to go. Like, you're getting the assessments, but when you pay the funds, probably best to come to City Hall or talk to our finance department as well to get those, those all good and good to go, to make sure there's no confusion there. And outside of that, yeah, administration's been working with departments on their budgets and preparing for the capital budgets for the upcoming budget cycle. And that was it for our Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Councilor Teason. Council Blackmore?
I did get my tax notice. Thank you very much, City of Grand Prairie. I thought the brochure, the information brochure that accompanied my bill was excellent and very clear. So, I would really encourage people when they open that envelope to read the brochure so that we all have a good understanding of where the value of our money is spent and that it is well-spent. It's not frivolously spent. So, I also really appreciated the discussion on the back of the brochure regarding the Alberta education tax. So, thank you to whoever wrote the brochure. It was a good job.
All right. Thanks for that, Council Blackmore. Moving on to item 9.4, the Council Committee of the Whole Meeting held May 14th. Councilor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole Meeting held May 14th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Call the question.
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
Bressi in favor?
And that carries unanimously. There's one item of business in your package, and I'll put it out there for business that may be arising. Large family development grant. There is the policy is in your package. Councilor Berg?
I'll make that motion and throw it out for discussion. I would move the council approve amendments to Policy 357, Development Incentives and Grants, the DIG program as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Questions for administration, recognizing Councilor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, for me, I did share more at length on committee of why I can't, can't support this. I just think the balance saw, it's too far for, far for me. And we even, I know we've even heard from one proponent of our project that's, that said, hey, this probably won't even make his project work. And for, for me, I think what we're doing is a small enough part of projects that it's not actually going to, I'm skeptical that these changes are actually going to help something get in the ground. I'm worried that they will significantly decrease municipal revenue for projects that would have happened even without these changes. And so, for me, I think it's reasonable to give the tax relief we've given during construction and while buildings are facing up towards occupancy. But I think once they're, once these buildings are occupied, I think the residents in these buildings will be consuming municipal services. And just like anybody in any other dwelling place in the city, they should be paid for those municipal services. So, I don't think this is necessarily unreasonable. It's just not something that I support.
Thanks for your comments, Councilor Teason.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to, I'm going to jump on the, the Bressi bandwagon here because I too am not in support of this. And I tried to do the math, for, for one apartment, as was proposed and when we discussed this a few weeks ago, over the duration of time, we, and based off the report, we could stand to lose 1.2 to 1.7 of municipal revenue. For me, that's a 1% tax increase for, for one development. And of course, it's stretched out over time, but over time, that's still 1%. Now, it also has an end date, but if we have five or six of those, all of a sudden, we're looking at an end date where we may be 7% to 10% increase to our taxes based off a decision we made in 2025. Not to mention, some of those areas, as Councilor Bressi intimated, we have to also develop as well. So, when I think of, let's say, the trader ridge properties and the potential for an apartment there, well, if we stack 200 more homes on there, the chances of the city having to move quicker as far as developing that road and that connector and the bridge, that costs money. And if we don't have municipal services or the, maybe a million dollars a year that we might have if we didn't pass this, then we could work on the, at least the borrowing by law and paying that debt down over time. But with this, it seems like too big of a loss and very much like the development community. I want, I want to get people in houses, but I want to do it the right way. And I don't want to do it at the taxpayer's expense. And that's what it seems like this, this might be leading us towards, even though it has an end date for, for this year, at the end of the year. So, I can support it as it currently stands, but I'm willing to listen, but I don't know if I'm going to budge in my stance. Thank you.
Council Blackmore?
I'm going to speak in favor of the motion. We have in our strategic plan quite a detailed section on economic readiness. And one of the key proponents of economic readiness is a workforce. We've heard from multiple, multiple sources, of businesses, of workplace studies, that we don't have enough places for workers to live in Grand Prairie. We know that there's the opportunity coming down the pike for other economic development that is basically pins its success on the fact of whether or not workers can come to Grand Prairie and fill those roles. Without, without rental properties, that's not going to happen. This just, it's our greatest handicap in our business world right now, in my opinion. And we need to take every step we can to encourage the development of products such as apartments that would otherwise not happen. We know that the building environment in Grand Prairie is very difficult for people who are interested in building rental property. We've heard from the side group tonight that they're, you know, they're, they're reinforcing that concept that it's not easy to build rental properties in a market that is lower than, lower rental than much of the province, but higher building costs. So, you get the, the best and the worst of both worlds there. So, I feel that it is important that we, as a council, support as much as we can the opportunity for building, for building apartments and developing workforce residents. Without that, we're, we're not going to see any growth in our population and we're not going to realize any tax growth. So, deferring a tax that doesn't exist at this point in time is, cannot fairly be called a $1.2 million tax cost because it simply doesn't exist yet. So, we're not taxing, we're not taxing anything. Is key to remember that the property owners of these places will still be paying their bare ground taxes. So, what they're paying today, they will continue to pay tomorrow. So, it's not like there's no tax revenue coming in. It's just that we're not charging taxes on something that doesn't exist yet. So, I would ask council to support this, to indicate to our building community that we understand the difficulties they're having and we believe that it is imperative to Grand Prairie's health and wellbeing to move forward, to encourage employees to move here and help us build a strong economy.
Thanks for that, Councilor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I do have a question for administration because I am, I'm hearing some colleagues saying it's going to create extra expense or potential. I, I'm not sure if this is for a CFO or a city manager, but if 300 new apartment buildings go up, would that trigger us hiring more firemen, more policemen? Like, I, I know that concept's being thrown around there, but I'm just curious, what is the trigger for us hiring? That's usually a budget, I believe, but.
Mr. Berg?
I don't have a precise answer, Mayor Clayton. Saying that, though, more population means we'll provide, there'll be more use of our parkland, our facilities. I don't know where that breakpoint is. I'd have to do some more analysis. But just, even if we're just looking at a localized multifamily, may require new transit services that we aren't currently providing in, in that area because of a localized population. So, I think there will be some impacts and there'll be some costs to the city as we increase population and the use of services. But I don't have a breakdown here in front of me what, what those markers are.
Okay, no, appreciate that. I wasn't sure if there would be a specific number on it, but for me, I'm going to support the motion. I agree with Council Blackmore. This has been a priority, this council, to get housing. We've done numerous studies on issues with staffing, housing affordability, housing issues. And so, this is a carrot in front of us that we can use. If it doesn't get subscribed, it's not, not a problem for us. There's no, there's no tax implication either way. I do find it ironic for the folks that don't want to support it because they're worried about tax loss. We've had a DIG program in place for commercial for a long time. That's basically the same program. So, I would, I would think if you don't want that, this program, you shouldn't want the other program as well. So, I'll be supporting that program. We have to signal to the building community that we're trying to do whatever we can, whether it gets a project off their floor, across the floor or not, time will tell. But if nothing goes across the floor, then this policy is actually costs us absolutely nothing to try. And if it does go across the floor, I'd probably argue the other way. If this was a difference on somebody building an apartment building that over 10 years, we could look as a million seven loss, we might not have got the million seven in revenue if we didn't start, have this proposal in front of us that we're trying to help incentivize those as well. So, I'll be definitely supporting this.
Also, Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. This is something that I do support as well. It's been over a decade since we've had any major projects outside of what Grand Spirit has done and is working on. And if you check your tax bill, there's a Grand Spirit fee on there. So, we've, we've been subsidizing that already. Again, it's been over a decade since anything major has come. And we've heard from two, possibly three different builders that they, they may want to consider something. So, even at that, if we get one or two of those buildings off the ground, I think that's a positive move forward, again echoing a lot of Council Blackmore's comments. And I see tax revenue down the road. Yes, immediately, there's some subsidies that we're doing, but eventually, it will add to the tax base for decades to come, once the, the 10 years are up. Or even five years down the road, when we hit around that 50% mark, then, then we're starting to see some revenue that right now is almost guaranteed not to happen at all. So, that's my comments.
Thanks for your comments, Council Berg. Councilor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Our vacancy rates have been the low, almost at all-time low. And apartments are the key to improving the attractor, attraction of workers. And we have been behind for a number of years. And just remember, the moment that we have anyone take this project on, it's going to take still two years. If we have any large announcement, announcements that are coming forward, in particular, Wonder Valley and the Gig, we will be way behind. So, I really think, I, I ask you to vote in support of this so that we can get the project on the go. Thank you.
Councilor O'Toole?
Well, I think everything has been said that I wanted to say, but I am fully supportive of this as a council. We've agreed that this is a good thing in the past. We need to get houses built. We need to get property filled. And I'm supporting this motion. Thank you.
Councilor Teason?
Yeah, thanks. I just can't, I can't do it. And I, I wish that my colleagues could have swayed me a bit more, but the way, the way I see this is this proposal was actually brought to us by the development community. So, if the development community brings you a bit of a proposal that's been retweaked by the city of Grand Prairie, it doesn't tell me that they're not going to subscribe to it. It tells me that they have money to save from it. And maybe they'll build and maybe they'll build even if they don't get this property tax incentive. We've done lots as far as creating that. I mean, I had to fight tooth and nail to get that Grand Spirit building over the, over the line, but we've done secondary suites all across the neighborhood. If every house was a secondary suite, not that, that's my wish, but then I think our vacancy rates wouldn't be as low as we say we are. I'm also looking at the table that was provided in the report by administration and the analysis of, of this proposal. And what I noticed in the top part of the first part of the table, as far as the jurisdictional scan, is that the cities of Edmonton, Red Deer, Erdgry and Calgary, who all have these municipal tax abatement programs, all received accelerated housing funding. So, they have extra money to play with that the city of Grand Prairie never actually got. Then when I go down, down to the bottom of the list, I see Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, Wood Buffalo, St. Albert, Strathcona, Brooks, Fort MacLeod, Drumheller. And out of all those comparable mid-sized cities to the city of Grand Prairie, they either don't have a program at all, aren't even considering one, or the longest, the duration of the tax abatement program is four years, not 10 years, or even 17 years, as has been requested a city council from other units. When I talk about services, I also talk about the city is in the business of building roads. So, if we slap 400 new residents with cars in an apartment building alongside, let's say, 116th or 132nd, next thing you know, we're going to have, or the next council's going to have within five years, well, we need to build that road. But we're going to be building it potentially with either $300,000 to $2 million less in the pocket every year, over year, depending on how subscribed this program is once it gets approved. I don't think it's prudently responsible. I don't think it's fiscally responsible. And I don't think the city of Grand Prairie wants to get in the business of building, helping developers build apartment buildings, because those apartment buildings are going to be built based off of the demand anyways. And we've already done lots of things for the interim that I don't think we need to go over the finish line with this one as well and have residents pay for developers, I guess, tax discounts over the long term. So, for me, I haven't been moved and I hope I've moved some members of council here, but I don't think this is a responsibly, fiscally or socially thing to do. Thank you.
Council Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just, I guess, a question for regarding the side groups asked today. If we were to, if this were to get approved today, would it be the, an amendment that we'd have to look at on that? Or would that, would it have been look at wanting to have an amendment included in that if somebody was trying to amend that?
So, the, the original request was in regards to an amendment of the existing policy, which is 30 units. And so, I think we can discuss that best when it comes to questions for administration under delegations, unless Mr. Berg had some additional to add.
The only thing I would add, Mayor Clayton, is the, the amendments we're looking at now, we're creating that new 125-unit-plus program. The request from, from side was for an amendment to the 30-unit program. I think we could treat those separately here.
So, I guess just to clarify, let this motion go through, fail or not, and then if I were to look at doing some of that other one, bring a motion after this one?
Yeah. Under delegation business.
Under delegation, thank you.
Yep, no problem. All right. So, I see no one else in the queue. Councilor Berg, would you like to close?
No, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think we've debated this enough.
Okay. So, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
Bressi opposed?
And that carries 6 to 2. Moving on to item number 10, correspondence. You'll see in your package, there is a letter from the former Minister of Municipal Affairs, Rick Maciver, identifying the annual 2025 local government fiscal framework allocations for our community. Mr. Berg, anything to add to that?
Maybe for council's interest, Mayor Clayton, I can give the highlights of what we've previously received and what's projected for 2026.
we previously received and what's projected for 2026. For 2024, we, on just the capital side, this is excluding the operating funding that we receive, so 2024, we received 7.87 million under this program. In 2025, this goes up to 9.14 million, and indicated in 2026, it will go down to 8.31, which is still an increase over last year, but it is less than this year.
Great, thanks for that. Any questions, recognizing Council Pressy?
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm happy to do business too, if you need somebody to do that.
Go for it.
But a question I did have is, has the, I know we're not getting funding for water, for water infrastructure like most municipalities are, has the province definitively decided that they're saying no to that, or is that still in limbo somewhere?
Mr. Burke?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. The, I'll say, ongoing dialogue, but has not progressed since our last update, but the door is still open for that dialogue.
Excellent, thank you. I guess just as an aside, we've got a new Minister of Municipal Affairs, so I think we should make that in front of him a priority for our, for our community. Happy to move if you'd like that we accept this for information and just speak to this. For those that don't know, the reason that we see this amount going up and down is this is a funding pot that's tied to provincial revenue. So the theory being that when the province is bringing in a lot of revenue, municipalities should share in that success to build infrastructure, to spur on the economic growth that's happening. But also when the province is losing revenue, municipalities, as the order of government closest to residents, are most equipped to do a little bit of belt tightening and find what are some priorities that you can pull back on. So we want to share the province's success, share in its struggles, which is why we see this going up and down. And so I appreciate this side's provincial revenue. That time, my opinion is still that this is a, program is woefully short. It's about 65%, funding in this program is about 65% less than the province gave to municipalities back in 2011. And when we see the province slashing municipal infrastructure funding like that, it means that we need to either do less for our residents, maintain less roads, maintain sewage infrastructure, maintain storm drains, all of those to a degree that we might not otherwise, or develop wrecked facilities less than we might have, or it means we need to charge more property taxes. I think there's been very hard conversations across this table about how do we deal with the province slashing it, and it's had a big impact on our community. So I am grateful for the province funding this money, but the same, funding this program, but at the same time, need to recognize that the massive cuts they've made to it have had a very big impact on both our tax rates and our ability to provide services.
So that motion is in order, recognizing Council Blackmore. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question.
Pressy in favor.
O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 11, delegation business. There are two delegations here today, first one being Mr. Craig Reed and I recognize Councilor O'Toole. Opportunity for questions for administration or any business that may be arising?
I think it would be best to just receive this, his, Mr. Reeves, just as.
Ms. Councilor O'Toole, are you okay if I come back to you? Because I think some of my colleagues have questions for administration.
Thank you.
So I'll come back to you for business arising. Thanks for that. Council Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate Mr. Reed coming in and offering his presentation to us. There are definitely some concerns that I think was shared by other members of council, but he did bring some thoughtful questions in regards to the FCM program. So I'm going to, I'm going to throw a couple of his questions out to administration and see if we have the.
Maybe you could take one, because I have a full queue.
Yeah, I'll take one. So I guess probably the most pertinent one, and probably what the delegation wants to hear is, what are the total operational and compliance costs associating with fulfilling FCM program requirements? Now, I'm going to, I'm going to stick to the partners in climate protection, considering that's how the delegation started with that. I know currently we have a monitoring program where we monitor where we're at as far as spending on that, but I'd like to hear from administration.
Mr. Burke?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I don't have a specific breakdown. It would be minimal and part of other, part of employees' regular contributions for any requirements. We don't, we aren't actively pushing or pursuing different stages through the Partners for Climate Protection. It has been a requirement in some previous grants that precede me that I don't have the full information on, but that is, it's not something that we allocate specific resources to at this time to administer.
Thank you for that, Mr. CEO. I guess my follow-up question to that would be, my understanding is we're just monitoring and assessing based upon that, and there is no cost associated with it yet as far as those levels that Mr. Reed was talking about. Am I correct in that assumption?
Mr. Burke?
That's, that's correct, that no specific costs associated to this as of right now.
Any requirements at all?
Mr. Burke?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. That is something I'd have to confirm. I do know there were some grants that previously did reference that program that had some for the application phase. So I don't know if they're ongoing requirements. They are, they are grants that were received a number of years ago, one being the combined heat and power unit that was presented as a business case that saves, that has a return on investment to residents to lower the taxes on energy costs for the Eastling Centre. But I don't have the specifics on what the ongoing are.
Sorry, just to follow up on Council Thiessen's questions, or question rather, the annual costs, can you identify that?
Absolutely. The 2025-26 costs for membership for the city of Grand Prairie to FCM are $16,406. That includes a $1,110 base amount, based on our population level, and then a .226 cent per resident, which 64,000 was the number used for that population. So a total of 16,406. In 2024, around the previous year, it was $15,887, just to give some context.
So following on the vein that Council Thiessen started, as with any grant, there is time and requirement. We have an individual whose sole job is to do grant applications. Do we have any indication of how much time would have been spent on the, I think there's two applicable grants from FCM that the county was applying for? Do we have sort of any indication? Or maybe a better comparable is, how many grants would we apply for in a year, and knowing that this is potentially two of the total grants?
I don't have that precise number. It is minimal. Most grants that we apply for are not through FCM, they're through the province or directly through the federal government. There are a few grants that, that we apply through, through FCM. The one this year that we've received was $125,000 to plant 266 trees. 80% of those were for replacement trees. So these are, these are costs that we would have borne by the taxpayer, but have been able to access funding with minimal strings attached through FCM.
So to reiterate, there were sooner 66 trees we were going to replace. We applied for a grant and received $125,000 to replace those tree at no cost to the ratepayers.
Correct, so this is work that we would have completed through our regular capital program.
Okay, thanks. I'll recognize the other colleagues, recognizing Council Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And yeah, I agree, it's good to have a delegate come in, and Mr. Reed did bring some good questions forward about FCM is, it does feel like their agenda sometimes doesn't align with Alberta's for sure. But my, I appreciate the $125,000 in 2025. I guess if I can get some context from admin, I think it was, this is a good fact finding exercise. What would that have been in previous years? Like, is that, is that a one-off year, or is that a low year? Like, I'm just wondering, is this a good year for us to be part of FCM? And then, you know, we got 70 years where the fees already covered one year, or is this something we receive kind of biannually? Annually, do we get different grants?
Mr. Burke?
So just looking back, and so I will, I will say that as far as I'm aware, a membership to FCM isn't necessarily a requirement to receive the funding that they've been asked to administer by the federal government. So there could be two distinct questions there. And so just looking back the last few years, there was the $125,000 for the trees. Previous program access through FCM was in 2022, which was the Clean Energy Improvement Program, which allowed residents, if they so chose, to access some, a little bit of grant funding and some low-interest loans to complete some energy efficiency renovations to their property, if they so chose. So that is one program. In that program, we received $689,000 as part of the grant and access to $1.3 million in loan. So that was not directly, but if was available to our residents. Looking back to 2017, is the, the previous one was the, was a partnership with Aqua Terra for the power system fueled by the landfills methane gas. So that was another program through FCM that we partnered with Aqua Terra on. That was for a grant of $500,000 and access, Aqua Terra had an access to a $5 million loan to work on that project. So that's, those are the grants that have happened in the, since 2017.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Council Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I don't have any questions of administration that have not already been asked, but as I have sometimes commented negatively about FCM, I should say that I really do believe that, all of the issues aside, it remains important to be a voice at the table, and we won't be a voice at the table if we stay home. So I would not support changing our membership in FCM, even in the face of the fact that it's not my favorite organization.
Thanks for your comments, recognizing Council Pressy.
Great, no, thank you. I do support continued participation, so we got to see the table, but also really do appreciate residents and municipalities advocating on this. I know that FCM's actually been spending a great deal of time in Alberta over the last few months with their president, their board members, their CEO visiting some municipalities, and they also visit the Alberta Municipalities Board to hear from them. And I'm optimistic that we're going to be seeing some changes in FCM in terms of being more responsive. But I do think that the reason that they're spending a lot of time listening to Alberta is because we've been saying, hey, listen to Alberta. So I do appreciate elected officials and non-elected officials who take the time to advocate for the needs of this province, to this federal body that is, when they're doing the advocacy work, it is a bottom-up thing, it is a democratic thing. And how democracy works is the people who speak up get heard. So I really do appreciate people speaking up.
Thanks. I'll just go to Councilor O'Toole for some business, and then I may have a comment.
Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry, I was a little tongue-tied there, but I didn't think I was going to get in. I thought Councilor O'Connor was going to tag me out. But I do appreciate the gentleman coming in. I have been at the FCM numerous times, and the topics that come up are usually no internet where they live out in the rural areas, rail dividing cities at times when they, when they need to get across the street and they can't. And I'm just going to say that I feel there's a lot of communication amongst the councillors that attend, the mayors, and I think it's valuable information. One of the buildings that got me going was the Arc Centre. I talked to some people and they have built those places, low cost, cheap to operate, and for designed for low income, and that kind of individuals and families. I would like to just make this, receive this information, receive his information as no action taken. Thank you.
Wait for that to get in the eScribe. I, it's a motion to receive the presentation for information. I'm sure it'll show up. I don't have it yet. That's okay, just wanted to comment. I concur with many of the comments that were made by my colleagues. I think that many times, more than not, the information that I received through FCM was informations in the hallway, informing people that what they may see in the media isn't truly a fair representation of Alberta, and in particular of northern Alberta. I can tell you from recently visiting family in B.C. for a funeral, the news that you see in B.C. is different than the news we see in Alberta, and you may refuse to believe that, but Alberta may not always be painted in the picture that we believe that it truly needs to be. And so having those conversations in hallways with elected officials from across the country is a great way to tell our story, and this council has prioritized telling our story better. So being at tables like FCM is a great way for us to share what we already know and what a great place this is to live, work, play, raise a family, and to invest. And so on a regular basis, I echo some of Council Blackmore's comments. There are sessions that none of us attend, and they don't relate to us, but there are items that we have an opportunity to share and learn from, and in keeping in mind that this membership is a yearly membership, at any given point, if the council decided that the alignment was not appropriate, or if there were initiatives that didn't suit our needs, we could choose not to renew that year. So I think I really appreciate the delegation coming forward, keeping it in the forefront of our mind and sharing their opinions. And I think with that, I will support this motion. So seeing no one else in the queue, I will call the question.
Councilor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. We had one other delegation, Ms. Side, with the Park Property Management Group. I'll recognize Councilor Plot.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I just wanted to ask admin, I guess, and my colleagues, when we made the policy around the smaller five-year program for these programs, with the 30 units, we had went back and forth on how many units we should go, and I think we lowered it down to 30, hoping that would be the threshold. My, I guess my question for administration, if I were to try to make a motion specifically around the BIA, I don't have a huge appetite to try to make this all over the city, but I do think we still have to try to do more in our BIA area. If a, if a person had a fourplex on a lot, because I know there's some other folks with fourplexes, I don't want to go that low if I can help it, but if an individual had two or three fourplex lots that they were looking at building at a time, and we went as low as, say, 10, I'm just throwing out an idea for council, if we made the minimum 10 in the BIA, if they were to apply for three fourplex lots at once, would that, would that qualify, or would they all be looked at as individual units? And I guess, I do want to see some more doors in the BIA. I think we've been trying, as again on this council, we've been trying really aggressively to keep more people living downtown, trying to pick a number that works, that doesn't get too prescriptive, but just wondering if somebody did multiple fourplexes, would they be used as fourplex, four units each, or could they lump them together into one development permit?
So one plot of land, multiple fourplexes constitutes one project or individual projects?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Are we talking in terms of the grant, like funding a grant? I think that would be up to the grant program, not so much the development permit. We could do the permitting on one development permit, but it would be the interpretation of how the grant program would fund it.
Okay, and I'll give Mr. Tarrant an opportunity to get to the presenter's table. He's worked extensively on this program, so maybe you could answer the question, Mr. Tarrant.
Thank you. So through the chair, the, what we have in the policy right now is that it's per building, and so that constitutes one entire footprint of a, of a building. So if it's a fourplex, it would be within that fourplex structure.
Okay, okay, I got it. Signal where I got it, I'm just going to reread that policy and try to see if I can form a motion, but my, my intent is to only look at lowering the threshold in the BIA area. I'm just not sure of a number I feel comfortable with yet on that, so.
So if I could make a suggestion, I know Mr. Burke is probably going to say that he would prefer we not build policy on the fly. And so would you prefer direct administration to bring back a potential amendment to the existing policy with some parameters provided by council, or what would you like to see?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. That's exactly the advice I'd provide. If it was simply changing the number in the, in the policy, that blanketed the whole city, that would be a relatively easy change. We would accept that here. If it's looking at a specific area in the BIA and some different configurations, that's something that I would have to bring back at a future meeting.
Council Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Tarrant, does this also have the December 31st, 2025 deadline on it?
The existing 30-unit policy does.
Okay, yep, thank you. And can you give me a refresher on how we settled at 30? When we always come up with these numbers, I always struggle on how we got there. And so if you could give me a little bit of a refresher, or somebody, on how we settled on 30?
Mr. Burke?
Administration recommended 100 to look at large scale. There was some debate and discussion amongst council to, to look at 30. So the number came from, was generated by council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tarrant, I had a question. How would you, if council were today, change the number to 10, let's say, from the current 30-unit policy? Tell me, and the policy was traditionally written on a bare land policy, so how would, I'm confused, how would that be addressed when it's a, when it's a revitalization? The 30-unit policy isn't, is it similar to the 125-unit policy in that, in the sense that you're paying bare land tax? 125-unit policy in that in the sense that you're paying bare land tax while that 30-unit policy or 30-unit property was being built? And if so, how do you how do you treat that when there's existing, is it the prior to renew assessment that would be evaluated on?
Through the chair. So the policy speaks to the incremental value of the taxes. So that's what would be rebated. So anything that currently being assessed would not be eligible for the rebate.
Okay. So they have a building that's worth a million dollars. Now it's worth 2 million. They're paying on that differential. Okay. All right, Council Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess another question for administration, and I'm happy to make a motion to come back, but is there is there a thought, or maybe you can wordsmith how we can, we have these policies, we try to pick numbers to Council Burke's comment, and we settle on numbers. But is there a way that somebody could, a one-off proponent like this could come in and apply with it coming through a process or discretion or something, or does it always have to go back to a process, the policy?
Mr. Burke.
We have developed this as a grant program as opposed to the bylaw, and that was a discussion we had furthered off, for a little bit more flexibility. But still, our advice is still there needs to the principle that it can't be for one project, but that it needs to be for a category of projects. It's still it's still a principle that we believe we should stand by and we must stand by under some interpretations of and legal advice on the municipal government act. So one-offs is not something I would recommend. It needs to have something. So an area of land, that could be one one category, but it has to be broad enough that it isn't for one specific property.
Okay, is there anybody else in the queue? Or do you want me? Okay, I'll come back.
Sorry. Thanks. Council Blackmore.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. At the beginning of this term, well, I guess, as a result of work done by the previous council, we had some dig grants that were focused on renovations and infill. We decided that those pots of money had been used up, but I'm wondering if projects like the one we're discussing tonight would be better met with a retrofit or some kind of other type of grant, similar to what we were using before. Because I wasn't on the previous council, I can't remember the details of those grants, but there seems to me there was one for retrofitting a building.
And it was very similar in the sense that it was based on the differential. You had to achieve a certain number. The assessed value had to, maybe share the details, Mr. Tarrant, if you recall. If my recollection is that the assessed value had to be, it had to be over 10 million, and but I can't recall. But it was basically that you were taking a building assessed at a certain amount, and you had to achieve a certain level of assessment with the renovation in order to qualify for that.
That might be something we want to look at again?
Possibly, yep. Council Plott, you had something else? Nope.
Going to try to wordsmith a motion, I guess, and I will just ask that we bring the appropriate standing committee, potential changes that could lower the threshold of units required for the program, not the 125 threshold, the 30 to 125 threshold, and also if this could be enforced just in the BIA area. And I guess I ask that is, my appetite would be for the BIA area. I'm not sure if that creates a whole other policy or not in that, or if the wording would need to be different in that regards.
I would suggest that it would be a completely different grant if it was restricted to an area, unless we're going to bring the other one back and have a discussion or debate on it.
Mayor Clayton, that's something we would look at. I have two clarifying questions, just to make sure we're on the same page. If, do you have something in mind than lowering? I'm just trying to think of us bringing back options, or would you just, is there a number in mind, as we've done previously, that you'd like to achieve? And the second question being back to the on a parcel of land and looking at phases. I'm unsure of just some of the consequences in just some of the the areas outside of the BIA, what would be the consequence, I'd want to consider that. It's more limited in the BIA, but just some clarification. Currently, as our policy has been built or based on a building, is there if there's some other direction for us to bring back? I just want some clarity.
And it's back around and around. I think I had the, we were asking how we got to 30. I remember that debate of how low do you go that I thought I could get it approved? And 30 was the number I picked to try to get the last one approved. And so here we are, and it's a guesswork. And so, I mean, my gut is, is I don't want to go as low as a fourplex, but if we want to see things in the BIA, there's a lot of fourplex lots that are still sitting vacant, and I'd like to see those get utilized and built on. So I'm sorry, I can't wing I can't wing a motion this quick on the fly. So I guess I'll probably try to think of something for next standing committees.
I have a couple others in the queue. I'll come back to you, Council Plott. Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I would support going to a lower number. I'm concerned about the area restricting it to one area. And I'm just wondering, ask administration, how much of a challenge is it if it's throughout the whole city, so it doesn't favor just one group over another?
Sorry, ask your question again? Or Mr. Burke got it?
What I would offer as a comment, it would depend on what the threshold was. If we are looking at just lowering a little bit from 30, there's not not a lot of lots that that would impact. So it's certainly something manageable. If we got down to the fourplex across the whole city, would become a little bit more of an administrative exercise. So it would depend.
So I'm thinking that a number like 10 sits in my mind, and that way, if someone owns a number of lots, could being a build a 10 sweeter would probably be pretty good. I think they usually try and go for 12s, but I'll leave it up to administration to direct us. So I'll just float that idea out there.
Councilor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Again, I like where Council Plott was going. I fully support development in the BIA. The issue that I do see, though, is I would suspect if we did strictly do the BIA, that developers would come forward in a month and a half outside the BIA, asking for equal treatment. And so again, the MGA says what we do for one, we do for all. So maybe more blanket approaches is the best way to go.
That would be my recommendation. Council Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to try to go this a different angle, maybe. How hard would it be for administration to pull data on how many vacant lots are in the city that could that could support an eightplex? 12plex is probably where my gut feeling would be, but 12plex to me is you're starting to buy a multifamily piece of land and you're developing it. Eightplexes can still happen on a 66-foot infill lot around the city. I'm just, I'd like to lower it to that, but I also don't know how many there are. And so I'm not sure if that's an exercise admin would be able to know how many of those potentially could be.
Chief Flavon, that'd be relatively easier to do?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm sure that's something we could take on and get it for the next committee.
So if we want, I could make a motion that I would direct administration to bring the appropriate standing committee, how many current lots are sitting vacant in Grand Prairie that would support an eightplex or larger. And I'll leave it at that. And hopefully when that debate comes back, then we have some more information that we can see about potentially tweaking the policy or not, depending where the will of council goes at that time. But I am curious about that. I do worry with fourplexes and down, those can be all over the place. Eightplexes, I feel are a product in our market, that there's some local people willing to build. And I'd like to try to find some thresholds for local people to get these as well. So I'll leave the motion at that. I'm happy to some changes on wordsmithing if people feel different.
All right, Council Bressi.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm I'm struggling supporting what I think the new motion is. I think I could get on board with supporting, looking at the BIA specifically. For me, there is a case to be made. Downtown is different. I think that when you look at, it's different for quality of life, and I think we do increasingly have residents when they're looking at moving to a community who are looking for vibrant downtown life. And I don't think you get vibrant downtown life without people living downtown. And so it's got that quality of life, that economic traction area. And also, I think that downtown is where we do have lower commercial assessment. And I think getting people living down there gets downtown assessment up, which benefits all taxpayers, even if they never go downtown. So for me, downtown is different, and I could probably support looking at if it's for downtown, when we start talking about, hey, yet again, we're going to make a change across the whole city to the state program. I'm getting to the point where enough is enough for two reasons. Part of it, and this is a small part, is just, at some point, we need to let administration focus on actually attracting investment and actually building a better community, not just doing work, because council keeps on saying, hey, we want to push farther, we want to push farther. But an even bigger thing for me is I really am worried about the chilling that this has on investment. I really am worried that, and especially when you get smaller and smaller projects where there's more potentials in the community of the investment community going, holy smokes, I better hold off on making investment decision because there might, because council's changing the incentives every four weeks, and there might be a better program for me next week. And so I bet I better hold off. And I'm really worried about what that could do to projects in our community, especially smaller ones. And so I do think that, again, I'd support looking at BIA, but if we're talking about all of the city, I think our program's perfect? Probably not, because it's such a subjective judgment call. But sometime we have to say, it's about the best we can get, at least for this construction season. I encourage council to consider that. And also, if we are going to make changes citywide, which I wouldn't support, but if we are going to make those changes, let's signal very strongly that we're going to make them retroactive and to May 1st or whatever it is, so that people know, hey, I don't need to hold off a month and a half because my project would have saved a lot more money if I broke ground a month from now instead of now. I don't know how you signal that, but it might be something we want to consider. But for for me, again, if we're talking, as soon as we're talking about outside of the BIA, I think I have troubles supporting doing more work here, not because I think we've got a perfect, but just, I don't know when you draw the line.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. As great, you changed my mind a bit about the BIA, Councilor Bressi, and I think there is an important incentive that we need to put to say, if we want our community and our downtowns to grow, then let's take this opportunity. But I do not want administration to not come forward with the empty lots that are around the city and look at other opportunities. And that way, we're not going against the MGA. So I would support doing a BIA and as part of the project. Thank you.
The motion. So I will come back to you. We'll deal with the current motion. Council Blackmore.
I was quite supportive of Council Plott's first motion. I'm not really tied to the number of units one way or the other, but I was encouraged by his motion, including the down business BIA area. I felt that that motion could go ahead just fine. And the question about how many empty lots are in town would be just supplementary information that could be provided by administration to the standing committee. I'm not really supportive of a wider city scope at this time, for reasons that Council Bressi stated quite eloquently.
Sorry, just so I clarify your comments, you're not interested in a blanketed approach? You're looking at a specific?
I liked the motion that focused on downtown, and I would prefer to-
The current motion doesn't.
I know.
Okay, okay. So you're speaking in opposition to the current motion?
I'm encouraging Councilor Plott to go back to his original motion.
Okay, okay. Councilor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. One of the things that I'm setting back, seeing it, some of this doesn't directly address the park property delegation presentation. And I think Council Blackmore may even touched it, but maybe it's something where, you know, Council Plott's motion may may stand or go through or be presented, but maybe it's something for the BIA that we actually go revisit that infill program and redevelopment program outside of lowering to 10 units or exploring eights. So just another thought, that maybe there's another leg to this table.
Council Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. That's why I said I didn't want to try to wordsmith motions on the fly. After seeing my motion coming up and hearing that, though, I do want to amend my motion, if I can, please. Counselor, direct administration to bring back report to the appropriate standing committee with information regarding current vacant lots in the city that would support fourplex or larger, and I'm lowering it to four, in the BIA area. And I'll limit it to the BIA area. I know there's quite a few fourplex lots in downtown. I didn't want to make that lower, that number lower, but I do have an appetite to try to see us getting more, just specifically in the BIA area, and that doesn't open it up to the whole community. So hopefully that, after a little bit of teamwork with council here, makes a little bit more sense. Thanks.
Recognizing Council O'Toole.
Yeah, I like the idea of the BIA area. We spent a lot of money in it in the last eight years. We got the streets redone, the sewers, and we're ready for big buildings. I would like to see a grant process to help get the vacant land and getting it going. We said we could do this, and we were told we could do it, and it just isn't happening. Now, with that, there's been some economic concerns over the years, and I can understand why developers didn't go ahead. But I really think that we can do our part and make it easier for the developers to get into a situation where they can build and make money and house people. And so that's my point of view.
Council Blackmore.
Yeah, for me, when I look at the motion, I don't feel it has much value in it, because the motion simply directs administration to provide us with a list of empty or vacant lots, doesn't address the concept of infill development or retrofitting buildings. So to me, the opportunities in the downtown go beyond empty lots. There's empty buildings that need need people in them. And retrofitting them is a valuable tool. You know, I've lived in cities where apart where office building, office towers have been retrofitted to residences, have been retrofitted to hotels. This is a normal part of an aging part of the city where buildings suddenly have a better purpose if they are repurposed. So I don't feel that the motion that's before us right now addresses those concerns at all. And so I guess if this motion passes, I will come back with an additional motion that will say something. I'm not sure what yet.
Just before I go to Council Plott to close, I think this actually would be, it's a good test. It's almost like a litmus test for me. I want to see, I appreciate the approach of seeing how many vacant lots there are, because if the number is significant, council may choose to up this to eight units. It's sort of, I think Council Plott's intent is to sort of gauge where the appropriate number is. Rather than just taking the existing policy, he wants to add another piece to the existing policy. But so I'm looking forward to the report. And and just remind council that this report changes nothing realistically. It's a it's a report to see what's what's out there. And with that, council would need to provide direction if they wanted to change the existing policy. Council Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Is this for my close?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is a fact-finding mission for me. And what it does is it allows us a placeholder to have a future conversation about what the number should be. Four is low for me, but having said that, if we find out there's five fourplex lots in all of downtown, then I'm probably okay with it. If there's 40 of them, I don't know if I'm okay with that. The reason I've chosen this angle, and I'm happy to hear what other motions would be, is this doesn't have a cost to the taxpayer unless it gets prescribed. If we're looking at other projects where we're going to start funding retrofits and everything else, that will actually have a, we'll have to take it low, we'll have to find cash flow to do those things. So the reason I'm trying to go more this angle, and I like the incentives, is there's not a direct cost to the taxpayer unless it's utilized. And so in these scenarios right now, if somebody chooses to build a fourplex in the future, or a eightplex or something larger, there's a tax increase coming at some point. This this holds the level, but I don't know if I'm in support of us handing out money to do retrofits. I mean, we'll see where your motion goes. The intent of this for me is if we want to try to get things in BIA, let's see how many opportunities there are in BIA, and then let's pick a number from there. We keep trying to pick a number, and I wish we would maybe do more subjectively, but if administration comes back with this report, and it shows that there's very few lots that are available, and we maybe make the number up to 15, and that's where it stays, and 15 would would work well in this proponents scenario, and maybe that's the number that low- lowest the number should be. But for me, that's, that's why I just like to have this report back, because we have a placeholder so that this conversation doesn't die.
All right. So that was Counselor Plott's close. Call the question.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
Bressi in favor.
Counselor Blackmore, did you have something else?
Counselor Plott's close actually gave me a better idea of where he's headed. And so it seems to me that we're looking for a reason to set the number at 30 units or whatever. And so I'm okay with that, and we'll see what happens when it comes back to standing committee. I know something will change.
So moving on to today's agenda, there are no notices of motion. We aren't taking a recess, so I'm going to head to delegation, or sorry, to council member reports, starting with Counselor O'Connor.
That's what I said. I had the great honor to send the storm off with a very rousing pep talk, and unfortunately it wasn't good enough, and they-
They went some-
What? They, they went 26312662, and we're very, very proud of the storm, and we look forward to the future as they come forward. So very proud of that. We, Counselor Thiessen and I attended Swan Avon School, they brought grades two and six together, went to Abendale School for a poetry contest, and the youth discovery expo was a huge success. It'd be interesting to find out what the numbers were and how many people came. I heard it was over a couple of thousand, so I went to a ribbon cutting at Clon Nursery. We had five sessions from Parkside Montessori, grades one, two, and three. I could only attend four of those. Had attended the cab meeting on May 15th at 9:30 to 11:00, went with council to Nurses' Week, coffee and donuts at the GP Hospital, it was very well appreciated. Went to a ribbon cutting at Springham Law, and I got a call, a text from one of our Yak council members saying, hey, are you coming to the composite graduation ceremony? And I said I wasn't aware that there, we were invited, it's not in my calendar. After making a few calls and talking to the mayor, I was able to get myself into that event, and it was great to see not one, but seven of our Yak councils graduated, and in particular Marion, and I'll mention the names, so Iman Nasib, Tanu Namzat, Chair Daisy Nellis, Tanvinder Repana, Manya Singal, Caleb Thomas, and Marion Nazda also was a co-valedictorian that day, which you don't get to be a valedictorian unless your marks are plus 98, 99, and so we should be very proud. And on behalf of my cohort at Yak, Counselor Berg, I would like us to give them a round of congratulations. These are our future leaders, so it's important that we're there. So thank you very much.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. My agenda was relatively short to one week. I took a much-needed annual holiday, so I was gone for a hair over a week, but I did get into the CCW where we discussed a lot of the topics that we were working on just minutes ago. I did get to attend two different events at the hospital, so I'm getting to learn the parcade pay system a little bit easier and, and run through a little quicker. So attended Nurses' Week at the hospital, and I would say we had probably 100, 120 staff from the hospital come in and some great conversations and, and learning in what different areas they work. So really enjoyed that event, and of course, today, we all attended the groundbreaking of Masqua Medical Center, and an amazing event. I had seen dignitaries from as far north of Peace River or even further north attending that event. So this is a whole regional thing that the city is benefiting from, but it is recognized outside of the city as well, and I think even Big Lakes County had a big check for over $800,000 to present too. So a huge day for our region and, and bringing advanced healthcare to the region. And then on Saturday, I had the honor of doing the proclamation here at the City Hall for International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biphobia, and standing up for those people. So it was an honor for me to read that proclamation, and that's my report.
To that, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Over the last couple of weeks, I attended the Association of Police Governance in Westlock. I also attended the Alberta Community Crime Prevention Association, and both of those, at times, were not necessarily the greatest conventions, you might call it, but this year, both of them did an excellent job. When you fill in the surveys at the end of the convention and you say this was too much free time, or this wasn't relevant, and the organizing committees listen to you, this really made a big impression on me this year. I also attended the Youth Career Discovery Expo. I had two grandchildren that were there, and they learnt a lot about, you know, they're only in their early teens, and they went there to learn about how they can direct their education to get into a career. So both, both granddaughters really got a lot out of this and set them straight in their career path. Also, I went to the ribbon cutting at Clon Nursery, and man, have they ever expanded over the years. I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Army Navy Air Force. We usually call them the Anavets, and they got a location in the Abendale area. Great facility, great, great opening ceremony. I went to Parkside, well, I didn't go, Parkside Monastery come here, and me and fellow colleague Chris, we did a presentation on, on government and council, and we had a couple of, well, it's kind of a routine thing we've been doing, and we had good participation. I attended the Nurses' Week at the, at the hospital, and something that I thought I knew, but I wasn't sure, the nurses, when they go to school, they go right to the hospital, they don't go to the Northwest Polytech. And I thought they had to cross the street and go and do that, but they don't. And, oh yeah, they, they ate lots of donuts, they don't get, when they're in school, they don't get a lot of money, so, so they all made a joke about it. I attended our policing committee meeting and the police commission meeting as well, and Masqua is not Masqua, it's Musqua Medical Center, and that was told to me by the elder from outside of town here that presented at Kelly Lake. She says it's spelt right, it's just not pronounced right. So with that, and oh yes, Special Olympics, it's not that far away. If you drive by Bonnetts, you'll see the signage around the Bonnett facility, and the opening ceremony is July 11th, and be lots of people here. Thank you very much.
Counselor Thiessen.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Oh boy, when you speak after the O team, you've got nothing left to talk about that's original. But I did write a few things down here that I thought would be awesome. I guess I'll start with my external committees. On May 15th, I had the pleasure of driving out to Slave Lake for Water North Coalition meeting there with members from around the region. It was a well-populated event with presentations from the province of Alberta regarding contaminants in the water and new testing guidelines. Inside of that, there was a slide shown fluoride. I remember being here in the council chamber about 11 years ago when we discussed fluoride, the fact that it was a neurotoxin. It was interesting to see that Health Canada came full circle, and at their conference last year in 2024, listed fluoride as a, as a known neurotoxin. So there's that for future fluoride discussions. But they also talked about PFASs, which is baryfluorinated alkaline substances, it can be anything from radon to heavy metals to whatever, that are also getting into our system. Unfortunately, the, the Health Canada and the province of Alberta haven't, haven't classified it beyond considered generally safe, because there's thousands of these that enter into our water system, and knowing what exactly they're, how they're impacting the body, whether it's negative or otherwise, it's too hard to, to study at this time, but they said that they will be setting out guidelines for PFASs in the future. We also received a presentation from the Towne Sundry, talking about their water main issues, their main water main issues, and the troubleshooting that they had to do with summer construction when their main, when their main water line runs underneath the highway, and how that can be really bad, especially when it intersects with main streets. So lots of learning there. I know all the technical people, especially around Aqua Terra, were really intrigued with that presentation, but it was unbelievable that they were able to do it and do it under budget as well. As far as other stuff around the community, I've already checked lots off my list, but the things that I love to talk about, McHappy Days. You know, I'm not typically a McDonald's drive-through guy, or even a McHappy Meal kind of order guy. In fact, most of the time, unless it's breakfast, I just try to avoid McDonald's. I like their coffee, and that's about it. But on that day, when we were raising money for the Ronald McDonald Children's Charities, I think McDonald's in Grand Prairie and probably every McDonald's in every city across North America was the happiest place on earth. I've never seen so many people smiling, singing, laughing, loving my songs. I could be the biggest goofball there, like a sideshow bob, like I have a nickname around the community, but they just loved it, and I loved being there. I was supposed to be there for an hour, and I almost did two hours before I took off to the Youth Discovery Expo. From there, Kalon Nursery, now this is in a lawn, I know, I know, Kalon though, is what it's all about anyways. This is an excellent local business here that's into, if you like, anything botanical, like your greenhouses, your trees. The nursery was actually to promote their food forest, and the fact that they are growing a forest, that people can come and make their purchases, and I'm sure the city of Grand Prairie and their Parks Department might peruse through those yards there too. So it was really great to see them, and to see their business expanding and grow was awesome to be able to provide greetings for that. And, you know, I had Arminy, the Air Force ribbon cutting on there. I really want to say thank you to Counselor O'Connor and Counselor O'Toole, the O team on that one. It did say in my notes that the speaking would be done at 6 o'clock, and I got a text at about 20 to 4 from Counselor O'Connor going, where are you? They're about to start the show. And Counselor O'Toole was not far behind in reminding me, and I was planning to be there for 4 anyways, thank goodness, because all the speaking started at 4:15 rather than 6 o'clock. So I was happy to be there, especially for veterans and long service members, to help them cut the ribbon on a club that hopefully will be open for decades for people to go into and enjoy a bit of community. Speaking of community, they're looking to grow their community. They also mentioned there that you don't have to be a veteran to become a member, just buy a membership and go have a beverage there. It's one of the more chill places to do it. I actually went the next day and had a beverage there too, and visited with some of our veterans that were sitting there. Finally, I just have to give a big shout out to the 3D Children's Charity Hockey and Soccer tournaments that happened at Charles Spencer School. Like, we're talking hundreds of kids, maybe even thousands of kids and parents and spectators like there. It was a very busy field. I know they raised tons of money. I haven't talked to the organizers yet, Darren Foley, to see where they're at, but I know they always do really well, and they always serve such a glorious cause, which is getting kids to their medical appointments and helping offset those costs with families as well, putting a smile on people's faces. This is kids helping kids, and it's the most beautiful charity I think we have in this whole community. So when you, when you break the ground on something like Musqua, and you realize Musqua's going to do for Grand Prairie what the 3D Children's Charity does for families, which is get them to their specialists, hopefully sooner and affordably, it's all good news. So I had a wonderful few days, and I have had a wonderful few weeks, and that is my report.
To that, Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'll just quickly mention a few events that a few colleagues have done. The Clon Ribbon Cutting, the Masqua groundbreaking today, congratulations again, Drysdale and his board, great, a lot of work put in there. Had fun with the Parkside Monastery, great classroom here with Counselors Thiessen and Counselor O'Connor. Always fun having the kids in the, in here, and they always have some entertaining things that leave you to laugh on when you leave. Also went to the Youth Career Discovery Expo over at the Bonnetts and Bowes, and I thought that was a great, great event for the kids to come and get a lot of ideas for their futures and how it was split up. I thought it was a really well-done event. Probably the biggest, the bigger highlight was I attended the Alberta Community Crime Prevention Association Conference, and it was a bit of an eye-opener, a lot of talk around cybersecurity. Sadly, a lot of talk about gangs and how they're using trap houses and taking over people's homes now, and scary things happening there, and just how they're attacking our youth and our vulnerable folks to do that. Stadton and Calgary having 45,000 new students over the last three years, and realizing most of these students are immigrants. So just looking at the challenges coming in the future in Calgary with, with a lot of that stuff as well. First time to that conference, so but I did think it was a lot of interesting conversations, and I really appreciated the breakout sessions and the halls, but yeah, that's my report. Thank you.
To that, Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Highlighted for me was 3D Children's Charity too. I love that event. Also got to attend Arbor Day. It's always fun getting to go to a grade one classroom or two and give away trees, so thank you to our foresters, thank you to our civil culture companies, and thank you to our rotarians who make that day happen. With Mayor Clayton and Counselor Plott, I got to attend the Intermunicipal Collaboration Committee. It's always a great privilege and pleasure to meet with our county colleagues, talk about how can we work better as two municipalities, and that's a really collaborative table where we agree on a lot and we're advancing initiatives on the things we agree on, and there's some things we don't agree on too, and we're having really healthy dialogue where I think both sides are really working hard to understand each other and figure out how do we move forward, even through disagreement. And so really appreciate all my colleagues, both political and non-political, that attend those meetings. Got to attend the Police Commission, Commission meeting. Highlight at the Police Commission meeting was we did look at the year-end financials, and so if any members of the public often get asked, hey, how's the budget going? Well, if you want a detailed look at how the budget is going, and you can go onto the commission website and look through the last meeting agenda packet and see the financials there. And then outside of the local area, it was a very busy couple of weeks for my Alberta municipality duties. I had an executive committee meeting for Alberta municipalities. We also do an annual strategic off-site day, so I had that as well as a regular board meeting. And then I also had a municipal insurance exchange meeting and an Alberta Municipal Service Corporation Board meeting. And so it's been, it was a really busy couple of weeks for those, but always appreciate getting to talk about how do we advocate better as a municipal sector, and especially get to appreciate talking about how do we deliver better business services to nonprofits and municipalities, including the city, so they can control their costs while delivering their services. So always appreciate that work. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Blackmore.
Well, it's almost, you know, like I have nothing left to say. However, I will start with, I did attend the Communities Futures National Conference a couple of weeks ago, was held in St. John's, and like many national conferences, the, the best part was to meet other community futures from across the country, but particularly across Alberta, as we share so much in common with each other. The best part of my two-week period was when I attended the Grand Prairie Boys Choir with the Edmonton Symphony. That was a performance that was absolutely worth... What's with you two?
[inaudible]
Yeah, please stop. So the Grand Prairie Boys Choir, when they were first formed, I think had 28 members, and when, when their choir master, Jeannie, came to council and told us her great plans for touring this small, little group of boys across the world, I think that there were people who were not very supportive or believing. Currently, the Grand Prairie Boys Choir has 159 members. Currently, the Grand Prairie Boys Choir has a hundred and fifty-nine members. The performance included Matthew Dalen, who is an opera singer, a Canadian tenor acclaimed for his really quite warm voice. Also Mitch Gorman, who's an indie folk singer who came up through the Boys Choir. There was about half of the Edmonton Symphony was actually made up of people who are from Grand Prairie, who currently live in Grand Prairie or who are from Grand Prairie. And the performance was amazing and wonderful. And it's not that often in Grand Prairie that we get to see or get to enjoy that type of musical culture. I so appreciated it. It was followed up for me by attending Nurses Week with Coffee at the hospital and also my external committee, South Peace Regional Archives Meeting. And they're really settling into their new space at Centre Two Thousand and have had remarkable attendance through their social media sites. Increasing at great numbers, which I did not bring with me. And I wanted to say to the Masqua Medical Board at their groundbreaking today, this is a kind of project that started simply because a group of businessmen and women in Grand Prairie felt that there had to be a better solution to healthcare in northwestern Alberta and have put their hard work and their money into making sure that this project continues to move forward. That doesn't happen in a lot of other communities. And I think that we are blessed to have people here who are so involved and so heartfelt that they they don't just sit back and say, well, gee, wouldn't it be nice? But they actually put their blood, sweat and tears and wallets into finding solutions. And so I really appreciate, more than the building, more than the groundbreaking, I appreciate the fact that we as a community have these people who make us, make our lives better. That's it.
Thanks for that, Counsel Blackmore. I think most of the items I attended have been said. I ended the ICC meeting with Counsel Pressy and Counsel Plott with the Invest Grand Prairie team and CEO Burke met with Spartan Controls on what we call an Invest Grand Prairie Connect. It's an opportunity for the Invest Grand Prairie team and ourselves to get to know businesses in our community a little more. But it's an opportunity where we show them what we're doing, but see what we can do to help align ourselves with initiatives that that organization has. So it was great to learn more about them. I met recently with the Odyssey House to get an update on some of the initiatives that they're working on. And stay tuned, they have some new initiatives to announce near, in the very near future. I wanted to say again on the Invest GP vein, wanted to say thanks to the team for putting together a great Nurses Week Coffee with Council. We had, I know, at least a hundred and sixty nurses in there because there was a hundred and sixty t-shirts at the foundation handed out and they were all gone in the end. So I think there was over two hundred nurses and and medical healthcare professionals that came by to say hello and grab a coffee. So that was great for us to be able to thank them for the work that they do on a daily basis in our community. I went to a class visit with a grade five, six class at Grand Prairie Christian School. It was an opportunity. I hadn't been in that school in a couple of years. It was great to see that group and how they learn about municipal government. I also got some great ideas that I will bring forward to council in the near future of ideas that I think would be good investments in in certain areas of our community. I also attended a Stringham Ribbon Cutting and the Masqua Sod Turning today. And with that, I wanted to wish the Calgary AJHL team the congratulations on winning the Centennial Cup. So we kept it here in Alberta. So and kudos to the Grand Prairie Storm for a great season. And with that, I wish you all a good night and we'll see you soon.